Good morning, everyone. And welcome to the May 13th, 2024 Grants Pass City Council Workshop. We have Councilor Fazer and Councilor De La Granger online. And Councilor Pell is coming in from the back of the room at the moment. We are going to get started today with some interviews for candidates for our Urban Area Planning Commission. And I believe our first candidate we're going to be interviewing is Susan Tokars Kraus, and she is on the phone. Is she actually on the phone? Okay. Susan, can you hear me okay?
How would you star six?
Okay. Can you do star six to unmute, Susan? Susan, can you hear me?
Yeah, she's still muted, and I can't undo it for her.
Okay. We can't undo the mute for you, Susan, so if you're able to push star six to unmute yourself if you're on a phone. We're working through a technical difficulty here. Susan, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Hey, we can. Welcome.
Okay, there we go.
All right. Got that worked out. Well, Susan is reapplying for our Urban Area Planning Commission. And Susan, I have a series of five questions to ask you, and then the council may want to follow up with some questions as well. Thank you for being with us today. Can we get started? Please describe the role of the planning commission and that of a commissioner.
Can you repeat that? I'm sick, and so I just forgot about this. So the role of the planning commission and that of a commissioner, you want me to describe that?
Yes, please.
The planning commission, here's a type. I'm sorry, I'm just not, I may have to reschedule this. I'm not even, basically, the role of the commission is to review applications for certain type, I call them variances, but they're not, and to review for code applicability. And if the public is going to make statements, review for that, and vote accordingly. I'm sorry, that's not, I'm just not doing well this morning.
Okay. If you're sick, that's okay. We can do this a different time.
I would really rather, I'm sorry, I had to postpone everything, my father's surgery, I can't be there, but I tried to be up here for this, and just, I'm, just a second.
Okay. No problem. Thank you for trying.
I'm sorry.
And we'll catch up with you a different day.
I'm just so sorry.
That's okay. Karen, what time are we planning to have the next candidate? Let's take like a, let's just start at noon. It's 11:52 right now. We'll recess until noon. Let's get restarted here. We had a delay in getting started, but let's restart our May 13th, 2024 Grants Pass City Council Workshop. And we are starting off with an interview of a planning commission candidate. And so we have here Glenn Arnason. And Glenn, if you would please step forward to this microphone here in the middle. I have several questions to ask you, and then the council may follow up with some additional questions. Thank you for being here with us today and for applying for the commission. Can you please start by describing the role of the planning commission and that of a commissioner?
I'm sorry, they're turning up my hearing aids. If you could speak up just a-
Yeah. Can you please start by describing the role of the planning commission and that of a commissioner, to the best of your understanding?
Describing myself?
Yeah, the role of the planning commission.
I'm sorry, I'm still having a hard time with the microphone.
Can you please describe the role of the planning commission and that of a commissioner?
Oh, the role of the planning commission?
Yes.
My understanding is that for all the years here is to determine what's best for expanding the community, for giving permits, for what should be rezoned or zoned properly to fit into the overall structure of the city. Basically, I think that's what they're all about.
Okay. And what specific skills would you bring to the planning commission?
Well, I've been in Grants Pass since 1981. I took a short sabbatical to Las Vegas to play golf for 11 years, but I came back. I built two businesses here, built several houses here, commercial buildings here, been very involved in the building side, been a contractor for 50 years, have a pretty good understanding of what fits and doesn't fit wherever it should go. Not that I'm always right, but my opinion means something, I hope. So I think I can bring a lot to the table as far as looking at what's requested and what would make sense and doesn't make sense, and then have a good viable reason why. My main concern is always when you're dealing with someone that's asking for something as far as rezoning or something to build, is don't just tell them no, it's not going to work. Tell them why it doesn't work and why it's not acceptable. Don't just turn them away.
What do you think is the most important skill for a planning commissioner to have?
The most-
Important skill. The most important skill.
Skill?
Yes.
I would say evaluating property, looking at what's, looking at, with the businesses I've built in Medford and here, looking at what fits in a certain area, what should go there, what shouldn't go there, that makes sense and doesn't make sense. I think I'm pretty good at that.
Should the planning code always be followed?
My plan's what?
Should the planning code always be followed?
I would guess I'd say yes, unless the planning code just doesn't make any sense. And I've run into that in the past. I've done some things where the planning code made no sense whatsoever, and I argued it. And several times back in the 80s, I got it changed because it didn't make any sense. So if it's something that, you're keeping someone from doing something that just doesn't fit, yeah, it should be contested and say, hey, maybe this needs to be changed.
Please describe your experience with land use and municipal planning, and how your experience is relevant to the role of the commission.
How my experience is what?
Relevant to the role of the commission.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the end of that. I'm just, if I had my hearing aids, it'd be better. I just don't have them.
How your experience is relevant to the commission.
Would, how my experience, I'm sorry, I'm still not getting the end of that. Well, does the commission-
Is relevant.
Does a different tone of voice help you?
Pardon?
Because a lower voice, can you hear a lower voice?
Yeah, I can hear that better.
Okay. Repeat the question, Sarah, and I'll repeat it to him. Yeah, I do.
There's just a lot of echo.
Okay, just a second here. All right. Please describe your experience with land use and municipal planning, and how your experience is relevant to the role of the planning commission.
I believe that, again, I'm going back to what I was kind of repeating, I believe I have a very good handle on evaluating expansion property, what's good for the city, what isn't good for the city, what's good for the county, or this is all city, right? Yeah. What's good for the city, what makes sense for the city. If it doesn't make sense for the city, I think it needs to be looked at, even if it's in the code, or what it is, have a reason why it doesn't make sense, and then correct it. Or if everybody agrees, let it go. But don't, I think one thing that's important to build a city correctly is don't keep making the same mistake over and over again. Correct it, and then move on.
Okay. Thank you. The next question we got for you is, describe how you would use the city codes and other information to balance the rights of a property owner versus those of a neighborhood or groups of people if you find they are in conflict.
If I find the property owner is incompetent or the neighbors?
If you find the neighbors are in conflict with the-
Oh, in conflict, okay.
With the rights of a property owner.
So in other words, someone is applying for something, and the neighbors don't want it.
Correct.
And so they're arguing against him, but if he is in the position where what he's asking for is in the code, and if it makes sense, and it's not something, if the neighbors don't have, I guess I look at it this way, I listen to the neighbor's complaint, and then say, okay, your complaint does not have any validity to it whatsoever. You're just complaining because you don't want it. There's a big difference between complaining because you don't want it and complaining because it shouldn't be there. And that has to be decided by a planning commission, to say, okay, just because you don't want it, that's not good enough. What's it going to do to deter from your property? And what is it violating in the code that makes it not proper to do? That's how I look at it.
Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any additional questions?
Yes, I'll try to, I'm over here. Valerie.
Pardon?
I do have a question. I'm just wondering if you're familiar with the code changes that have come down the pipe from up in Salem in terms of middle house coding, middle house, the middle housing code?
I'm not familiar with that at all.
Okay.
I couldn't get familiar with it real quick.
Yeah, you probably will.
I'm a pretty good learner, but I really haven't involved myself, I've been back two years. And I was very involved before because I was building in the city. Since I got back, I haven't paid much attention. But I was looking for something that I could contribute, since I have a business, but it's down in California, and I'm pretty much semi-retired, and I'm looking for something to do.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
I need to stay busy.
I do understand that. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here today, and the council will decide on our planning commission candidates on a future date, and we will send you a letter either way, letting you know.
Okay. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming.
You have a nice day.
You too. All right. Next on our agenda, we're going to talk about private streets. Looks like Brad is coming up to help with that.
Members of the council. So we're continuing our discussion today about private streets. We have Justin Gerlitz here with Home Builders Association. Do we need to stop?
We just want to have PowerPoint for a minute.
Oh, okay. She says, we want to have PowerPoint for a minute, but I think council has all the slides. So, yeah, as you know, we're just going to, we're going to be continuing the discussion we had started in March. There was a couple of outstanding things that the council had talked about at that meeting. So point of today is to kind of try to bring that back around and see if there can be some resolution on a couple of those items. The first one, I think we may have found the resolution, and Mayor, leave it up to you of whether you want to talk about this separate from the private streets. This relates to private streets, but it deals specifically with the utility easements. So the Home Builders Association had requested, and actually, much prior to that, I think this has been an ongoing conversation in the city for quite a while, about allowing for water mains in the private streets up to this point. Public Works, and Jason is here, has interpreted our code, and rightfully so, that it's, you can only put the, the meters have to be out in the public right of way. So it has meant, and you'll see this in many of our private street locations, if you walk around town, there's a row of meters that's kind of out at the sidewalk, and so there are no meters that actually go down that private street. They're all out at the, out at the front. By allowing a public water main in a private street, you would, you know, potentially be allowing for that. But they would have to be in easements. What's in front of you is some language that Jason and his team drafted that would help to address that. So we need to, oh. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just keep on going here. If you, if you have any questions on that, we can, we can talk. But basically, at this point, this language has been put forward as a text amendment, and so there will be a public hearing on it that's being scheduled before the planning commission, and then before the council. Slide six is a summary of the March 4th workshop. That's mostly for the council's reminder, just what some of the key topics that we discussed on March 4th. The last bullet there, the, thanks. Fire Marshal Hyatt stated that the on-street parking is the department's primary concern. The last bullet, under the Home Builders Association in the middle section there, were the three top issues that the Home Builders Association brought forward, number one being public safety, number two, parking, and three, the ability to build more density on existing private streets, which I think summarizes well sort of why this is before the council. Some of the deliberation that the council had, there was, it was a long discussion, as you may recall, so that's why this is called a summary. But I did try to pull out some of the, some of the key points. You talked about the advantages and disadvantages of the additional six or seven feet. If you recall, there's two different types of private streets. One of them allows up to four units, one of them allows up to 10 units. The one that allows up to four units is the 20-foot wide one, it doesn't have any sidewalks, curb or gutter. The one that, the street that goes up to 10 units has a required sidewalk on one side and the, and the curb and gutter. There's a six or seven foot difference between those two, and so we talked quite a bit about, does that extra width, is that sufficient to actually allow for on-street parking or not? And there was conversations about whether the sidewalk by itself would accommodate that from the fire standpoint, that really, you have to have that extra width, you know, be able to support a fire truck. So that's, that's why you would not just be able to use an extra, an extra six or seven feet, if you're talking about the, you know, the front yards of somebody or something like that, soft surface. It has to be engineered surface. We talked about, the council deliberated on balancing the increased housing and density with on-street parking. We talked about a staff level waiver option to address on, on a case-by-case basis versus a variance to sort of streamline a process. If someone comes in and says, I want to do an extra unit, how do you accommodate that? On those, and we expressed this at the last workshop, you know, without really clear criteria for what that would look like, staff would not feel comfortable having that sort of just negotiated on a case-by-case. Enforcement authority, we talked about the different levels of enforcement that are currently in the ordinance, and then we'll have, in a couple of slides, we'll talk about an idea to potentially enhance that a little bit, and that would be the ability to tow vehicles. Right now, the fire code official, which for us is Joe Hyatt, does not have the authority to actually tow in a fire lane. We issue citations and ticket them, but in an emergency situation, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't help you as much. You talked about requiring off-street parking for additional units in light of recent council decision. We brought, there was a question on that, that was one of the reasons you continued the discussion. We've got a little bit more information for you on that today. Also, the level of density that's allowed without creating public safety concerns. Pedestrian safety was brought up by, I think, Councilor Pell. And then allowing all owners the same right to construct the same number of units versus sort of a first-in-line, first-in-right situation. There was not a total decision on that, but I think generally, the council was not wanting to create that situation for neighbors where you basically are pitting them against each other if you, if you don't allow them all to have the same level of building right. Here are the relevant fire codes. Joe talked about these on some level at the last meeting, but we did want to put them in to the workshop materials today, just so you can actually see the language that's in the fire code that we have. We talked about the rules. I won't read each one of these, but essentially, you do have to have that unobstructed 20 feet for these private streets. Talks about the authority, and then some of the other obstructions. So here's what we found in terms of the fire lane enforcement. So private streets, under private ownership, the fire code limits our ability just to the use of fines. The city attorney did weigh in, and Mark does believe that the council has the authority to grant the fire marshal the authority to tow vehicles on private streets when you have a, you know, a life-safety kind of situation, which really, blocking a fire lane would certainly fall into that. That would require a municipal code amendment, because right now, it is, it's not explicit in the, in the fire code at all, so that would, that would be a municipal code amendment. There are some ongoing conversations between police and fire about citation responsibilities and authority posted in fire lanes, and if you want, Joe can speak more to that. On the off-street parking rules, this was one of the things that the council talked about before, because this is really kind of getting to the heart of the matter. You know, in a 20-foot street, you've got two 10-foot lanes. Two 10-foot lanes does accommodate for two-way traffic, but if you have the parking, the on-street parking, that's where it really poses the challenges to get around and maneuver. And not just for emergency vehicles. I mean, we're talking about delivery vehicles, we're talking about ambulances, we're talking about, you know, UPS and everything to a pizza delivery person. So it does matter. Under the climate-friendly rules that the city is subject to, we are not, we don't have any off-street parking mandates. So that's all market-driven at this point. We got ahold of DLCD staff, and it's not a formal legal opinion on their part, but they're at a staff level, they said the, you know, the rules don't address a private situation like the one being discussed. I mean, this is pretty unique, so it's, at a state level, those rules aren't ever really going to, you know, come down to that level of granularity. But a party could potentially challenge a mandate if you chose to actually mandate that new off-street parking be added to a private street. You know, he said, well, we could, we would probably flag it when it comes through the system and, you know, ask you more questions. You know, obviously, there's, there's no ability at this point because it's never been tested in terms of what that would actually look like. But he, they cannot recommend that the city create a mandate for the off-street parking. So that's about as much information as I think we're going to be able to get from the state at this point. So that's where we're at. You'll see on the, one of the alternatives, rather than actually mandating off-street parking, would be to ensure that there's at least sufficient setbacks between, say, like the house and the property line, or the house and the street, that you could, you could get off-street parking. But that's, you know, it's really only getting you halfway there, and it's voluntary in many ways, because, you know, you're not mandating that that space be used for parking, but you are mandating that at least there's sufficient room to get a car off-street. So maybe, I haven't had a chance to talk with Justin more about that, but we can, we can talk more about that. We did do a little bit more research on what is the, what are some of our comparator cities regs look like when it comes to private streets? Ashland, Central Point, Medford, McMinnville, and Roseburg are the cities that we looked at. Ashland has the most restrictive of these. They, they allow private streets only to serve up to three lots. Anything above that, they require a public street. Central Point does allow private streets, but they have the 36-foot width on those. Medford only, only allows them through a planned unit development, and they are the same design standards as public streets. So in essence, you know, it's only the ownership of the street that's really any different with that, and you have to do a PUD. McMinnville refers to them as private ways or private drives. They are also only allowed through a planned unit development, and they also require the same standards as private streets. And when we say same standards, we're talking about both the, how it's constructed, you know, the amount of gravel and the amount of asphalt underneath it, as well as the width. And then Roseburg, private streets are allowed, same design standards as public streets. They do, they may allow to that 20-foot wide in some special circumstances. So in general, the city of Grants Pass is already, at least with, with these cities, we looked at a couple others at a higher level, we already allow private streets to be used in a, you know, more frequently and in more commonly in situations, and without a planned unit development. So that's, that's out there mainly to, so you can get a sense for where we stand in terms of our other cities. So a few decision parameters to consider, a couple of these are repeats, a couple of them are new. The Oregon Administrative Rules does define sufficient infrastructure that would include access to the new units on- access to the new units on a public or a private street system. Technically, a 20-foot unobstructed, all-weather surface that, you know, can support a 70,000 to 80,000-pound fire engine does meet the emergency vehicle access standards. This sets a minimum standard. It's not equivalent to the standards set in the zoning codes. The key difference is really the private control and the management of the private street versus a public street. So the OARs with this, again, this is middle housing, when that particular 660 section is, we're talking really about middle housing. Does it give you the ability to regulate this? And the answer would be yes, as long as you're talking about meeting sufficient infrastructure under that parameter. OAR 660, 46220 is stating that the applicant, you know, and the city have to work together to determine, is your project going to meet sufficient infrastructure? We've been doing this, we did it on a Fruitdale project, Fruitdale cottages project, and we're going to have to continue to do this on some level, because middle housing by definition is going to create a lot of situations where it doesn't just meet neatly into the code. So the current process sets the base standard, and then moving forward, the vehicular access standards and infrastructure on private streets is what we're trying to define today, so that moving forward, we know both on the city's side and on the developer's side what the rules are on private streets. This one is a repeat from last meeting. Basically, we're not able to regulate the type of middle housing, so then any new rule wouldn't be able to call out duplexes, which I know is what we're focusing on, on this particular conversation. But we can set a maximum dwelling count number. We expressed this before, not recommended to determine the maximum number of units on a case-by-case basis, so by setting clear objectives through this process, we will be setting those standards and have it in place in the code. So this question about the level of risk came up last meeting as well, and there's a lot of different approaches that the council could take in terms of setting policy on this situation to evaluate risk, looking at, you know, both intended, unintended consequences. And I think you actually did a really nice job last meeting of trying to sort of hit, what are all those implications that would come from increasing density on private streets? So I think we're already well down that road, but there's a few other things here to kind of summarize as you're moving deeper into your discussion today. So the first one there, when thinking specifically about 20-foot access and serving new dwelling units, considering other residential access standards that are found to be acceptable, we've got a few of those on the next slide. What is the safety and accident data? A lot of the research that's come out of the last 10 to 15 years on terms of, you know, just street, street width, really comes down to speed. So in many ways, that's not a factor, because, you know, our private streets, you can't even go longer than 250 feet. So I guess in 250 feet, you could get up to a pretty high speed if you have a electric motorcycle or something, but generally, we're talking about pretty slow speeds, and that really is the top consideration when you're talking about risk to pedestrians, risk to bicyclists, risk to drivers. The third bullet, responsible and affected parties. So private owners and/or the homeowners association bear responsibility to manage these, and that includes, you know, all of those things listed there, lighting, sweeping, snow removal. But the city's affected because of emergency access. We're the ones that are going to get the call in an emergency situation. The fire code assumes a public street for fire access, so again, that's why we're trying to give you, what does the fire code say, and we really want to focus in on that, the ability to preserve that 20-foot free and clear, unobstructed access. Private streets are permitted as cul-de-sacs, so that's, again, just kind of one of the parameters that we're, for you to consider, you know, we're not, you know, we're not ever going to see, I think I can say ever, because I looked at a lot of private streets, a connection of that private street to some other street other than the one it connects to, the main street. So again, in terms of through traffic and other, any chance for other vehicles to come and use that private street is almost none. And then, of course, just keep in mind the two-tier system that we have. Here is the Grants Pass Development Code. Some of the other areas where we talk about access width are listed here. We talk about it with cottage developments, the allowed-through share lanes on those. Fire hydrants are required in a cottage project, so that does lower the risk, whereas in more of a standard, single-family detached house, you know, your fire spacing is 400 feet, I think about, right, Joe? So, you know, you may or may not get that hydrant spacing so that it serves, you know, exactly where you want it to be, unlike a cottage project where it's, they're going to have to put a new one in anyway. There is a minimum 22-foot drive aisle width in commercial parking lots. That's for two-way traffic, 90-degree parking. There's a 24-foot approach tapered down to 20-foot when you're talking about apartment buildings. So that is, the biggest difference there is on those multi-dwelling apartment structures, the code already requires a fire department connection, hydrant, sprinkling of the building, things like that, that are going to help reduce the risk on apartments, buildings. So even though you may have a similar access, you have these other factors that are going to help to reduce the risk, because there are fire controls. And then our alley widths are there. So those are just context for you to think about, okay, what are the other areas where we require around that 20-to-22-foot wide width? This slide repeats what was in the last presentation, transportation system plan, just for reference. This also is a repeat, so you can see what are the other Grants Pass Development Code standards in terms of paving width, planer strips, where we require the sidewalks. I think we covered that pretty well last time. So in terms of next steps, we divided this up into two slides. The first one would be related to the streets serving two to four units, and then the next slide would be the five to 10 units. On the two to four units, these are the 20-foot wides pavement with no sidewalks, no on-street This, a couple of options. One, you could allow the maximum of two dwelling units per lot, so that would be an increase, a doubling, excuse me, because today you can do four, one unit on each lot. This would be two units on each lot. And you could require that front or side building setback to be adequate to meet the parking. Again, you're not requiring the parking, but this is kind of a little bit of a go-around, and we can have more conversations about that. You could just allow the two units per lot and not require any kind of setback or additional area on the lot to be provided. Direct staff to add off-street parking minimums to accommodate the additional units. Because of our conversation with the state, we're not really recommending that, but it's there as an alternative, and you, or you could just maintain the current standards. In terms of the bigger street section, the 22-foot that serves up to 10 units, we, at a staff level, are not really recommending at this time any change to that, assuming that you support the idea that you're not going to allow only some of the lots to build and others not. If you go with the same standard as the last one, that would, that would put the cap up to 20, because you can do up to 10 units on these. So if you gave one extra unit per lot, that would be up to 20 units on these 22-foot wide streets. And without, you know, creating that situation, at this point, staff did not want to put forward any kind of recommendation to support that. So your call to action is at your discretion. There is that, this is not on your sheet, I just added this this morning, but do you, does council want to amend the municipal code to grant staff the authority to remove, to tow vehicles? So that would be one of the questions before you, as well as talking about the easement. Do you support the language about the water mains being in easements, and then the options on the private streets?
Thanks, Brad. It looks like Rob has a question.
A few questions, Brad. First off, on the tow, the ability for the fire department or someone else to tow, does that happen at the time of an emergency? Someone's house is burning down, and you've got to move a car, or does that happen at any time to keep it free as a general rule?
Well, I think, and maybe Joe can come up while I'm talking, but I think the, those kind of details need to be worked out, but I think any fire lane violation would be at any point that that is blocked. I mean, if we get a phone call and they say the fire lane's being blocked, it wouldn't just be during an emergency situation.
Okay, so, yeah, because it would seem as though that's a little bit late while a house is burning to then go to tow, so it would be something that, I guess, you'd want to stay on top of all the time, I would think, but that's my question.
Yeah.
What's the plan?
Yeah, so correct. I mean, it would be hopefully proactive to the scene. Once the emergency scene is happening, the tow is probably going to even complicate things. One of the downsides is we don't really have any kind of proactive policing for that. It's going to be complaint-driven, so that kind of becomes the other issue with those.
Okay, thank you. So can you tell us, Brad, the difference, like practically speaking, what's the difference between a 20-foot street and a 22-foot wide street? Like, why are requirements different? It seems as though that access for fire trucks and so forth, emergency vehicles, would be roughly the same on both, so why is there differentiation?
Yeah, well, again, the main difference is that in the 22-foot street section, it mandates the sidewalk on one side. And so with increased number of units, you would expect increased pedestrian activity as well. So it does dedicate an off, you know, an off-street area for pedestrians to walk. It also gives that extra four feet that is a little bit more maneuverability for firefighters in an attack situation to get around if they need to.
Okay, so I've got a couple more, but someone else has something else they can...
Rick had a question.
Thank you, Brad. So in your history and planning, have you ever found complications with private streets after they were built, that they brought problems or created problems? I haven't observed that myself, have you?
I have, both on the county side, I worked in, you know, county planning for 15 years, as well as on the city here, I can only think of two examples. They were off of kind of the Elmer Nelson area, I can't remember the exact name of the private street, but they were, trailers were being parked and blocking, you know, it wasn't vehicle in that situation, it was trailers, but, and the, you know, the owners really weren't cooperating with each other, so they called the city to see if we could put a sign up on the private street that says no parking. And of course, our answer was, well, we don't, this is private property, so we're not going to be enforcing that. So, you know, are there situations? I think the answer is yes. Again, this gets to mitigating, you know, the problem on some level before it happens, so that if we do have to get in there with an ambulance or something else, you have that.
So I like our discussion that we're having today, and I think when we had LOC up in Ben, we took a tour of the cottage developments. And if I recall right, I didn't measure the streets, but I have this thought in my mind that they were only single-lane wide, but they might have been double-lane wide. But the main issue I see that I appreciate, if you don't have to have sidewalks on both sides, I think that makes a major difference, so, well, thank you.
Yep.
Joel, and then Val, and then Vanessa.
Brad, excuse me, Brad, I just had two questions. Roseburg, under their private street regulations, they may allow to 20-foot wide only in special circumstances, and that was kind of a red flag. What are, you probably don't know, but what are the special circumstances where they go down to 20 feet wide?
Yeah, and sorry, I did not get what those are.
Okay, the other, the other, next thing, ambiguous language, it talks about sufficient infrastructure. That's on slide 12, that a large city, which I'm not sure we qualify as a large city, shall work with an applicant for development to determine whether sufficient infrastructure will be provided. And reading between the lines, it looks like a sufficient infrastructure is a 20-foot wide road. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we do count as a large city under the rules.
We do, okay.
Yeah, 25,000 is the cutoff.
Okay, it's large.
Okay, I'm assuming that on both of the 20 or 22-foot, either one, there has to be either a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac, so there has to be a turnaround, so I'm just assuming, because we haven't talked about that, that that's automatically...
Correct.
...set for those. And then my question was, with the 20-foot, if you're going to have a, or you can tow them, you were just saying that you couldn't, because, couldn't put up a sign because it was a private street, so in that case, would we be able to put up a sign saying that it was, you know, towable, or how would that work?
So one of the problems came to exist in the fact that we kept finding these parking situations on private streets. What I did when I addressed it was, we started declaring them a fire lane, which under the code allowed us to issue at least a citation to have them move. You know, the ultimate goal would be to put something solid in municipal code that would cover, you know, that a lot stronger. It's never been to court, never been tested, so I don't know how that would actually plan out.
Going back to the easement discussion, in the original reply letter to HBA, there was staff apprehension to allowing public easements, and it even detailed that the Medford Water Commission is moving away from that practice because of the contention that they've experienced. Does that apprehension still exist from staff, and the code amendment is kind of just offering counsel?
Yeah, I'd like Jason to speak to that.
Thank you, Brad. We still have apprehension about it. We're trying to write easements that are firm enough to protect the city. Medford Water Commission does still allow them in very limited circumstances, especially when there's a benefit to the commission. What we're trying to do is just, again, make sure that our easements are very strict, that we're protected. Some of our concerns are that it really is blurring the line between that public and private street now, because all of the public infrastructure is back inside of this private street, which does confuse it. And I think in the future, those that come after us, you know, because it'll probably be years later, there will be a lot of confusion over who's responsible for operation and maintenance of those streets. But we took direction from you, we felt that that was the guidance, we are writing the codes to allow that practice.
Thank you. Rob.
So I'm going to assume, but I don't know for sure, when someone buys a home on a private street, is there some kind of sign-off of all the different parameters that they can expect? Because the reason I ask is, I was out yesterday, speaking to people on private street, in a situation where pretty much nobody parked on the street, all the original owners were there, one house got sold, now there's a house that every single day has at least two cars parked on the street and three in the driveway. So the point is that nobody on the, who lives on the street really knows what to expect, even down to the point of they have no idea whose responsibility it is to repave the street. They have no idea whether or not, you know, what emergency access should be if someone were to park on the other side of the street. Now you've got essentially one small lane down the middle, but nobody who lived on the street really has any idea what rules that are applying. So when someone buys a house on a private street, is there a sheet where they have to sign off to, that they say that they understand all these differences between a private street and a public street? Because nobody on that street seemed to know of any.
Yeah, that's a great point, Councilor, and I'm sure Justin can speak to it as well. My experience is that it really depends on the original developer and the... My experience is that it really depends on the original developer and the level of detail that they put into their CCNRs, if they create CCNRs, which of course, they're not required to. But if they do, you know, that, that is outlined, and that should be at your time of closing. That's one of the documents that's there is to review the CCNRs and review the terms. So in other situations, it, you know, you have a homeowner who takes particular leadership in terms of helping to enforce a situation like this, where they will actually take the initiative to go and make sure people know, and they'll actually maybe serve as a treasurer, or, you know, collect some dues to help repave. But if you don't have a proactive homeowner that lives there, then you do get a situation like the one you're referring to. So I, you know, without the city, since we do not have the authority, nor do we want it, to enforce CCNRs. Now, there are maintenance agreements sometimes as well, which aren't formal CCNRs, but the, the maintenance agreements get recorded at the time of the, of the plat. And those should also be disclosed as a document at the time of a closing, that maintenance agreement that says that they have a responsibility to do X and X. But it, it, over time, they can really present a challenge, I think. My experience is that the first 10 to 15 years, they can work pretty well. The further you get down the road, the more challenging it can be with frequency, you know, turnover of, of owners and things like that.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree with you, as my experience is being the proactive homeowner in a situation on a private street in the past, and you have an issue of, first of all, does everyone have the financial wherewithal to be able to contribute to certain things that have not been spelled out, you know, when the street was developed? And even if they were, you still come up short if someone's in foreclosure and so on and so forth. And, you know, that one person, while well-meaning, ends up being the bad guy sometimes, and it can be a real nightmare. I'd like to hear more from Justin on that, because it really seems like, that to me, when you're moving forward with private streets, everyone who lives on that street needs to know all the parameters involved, as whose responsibility for what? Because I, like I say, now, and maybe the people I just happened to speak with yesterday didn't know it, but they didn't know it, they were clueless as to what their responsibilities were and so forth. The other question I have is, I guess it's, it's pretty simple, I, I think it's self-explanatory. When you have the comparator cities, private street regulations, it seems as though that right now, compared to the, with regards to comparators, Grants Pass is the most liberal as far as what we're allowing compared to all the parameter, the comparators that you listed.
That was our finding.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brad at the moment?
Thank you.
No? Justin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
There you go. Hello, Justin Gerlitz, member of the Home Builders Association. Appreciate council taking the time again to discuss some of these concerns that we had brought up in the past and continuing this discussion. Kind of just to reiterate, the reason this was originally brought up is the middle housing code. Middle housing code kind of upended all of our normal codes to a certain extent. In addition to that, middle housing land division has now changed that, and in addition to that, the climate-friendly parking standards have changed that. So the reason that, that we're here today is really to kind of solidify where we're gonna land on private streets with middle housing uses primarily. Utility easement discussion, I think we did have a good discussion on that. Just kind of as a reminder, one of the main reasons is we're now finding ourselves extending water mains for fire hydrants into these developments, these kind of middle housing type developments, a little bit higher density. And so you end up with a water main down a private street or a shared access roadway anyway, and the water's already there and it's already public. So that was the reason that we were pushing for allowing water meter connections to this public line that was already within the development versus running kind of a spaghetti of, of private service lines from the road back into it. Small sites, you know, small, little projects, three or four lots, usually not as big of a deal, but when you start doing middle housing developments or 10, 10 private street lots, it ends up being quite a problem, not only for kind of all of these lines running in there, but also for pressures and things like that. I do agree, I mean, I own a, a property on a private street myself, I've had very good luck with the one I have, but, you know, I do agree, if, if we can change the municipal code to allow the fire department to tow vehicles parked on the street, you know, maybe after a certain number of citations, definitely would support that. I think that would kind of give, put the fire department's mind to these a little bit. I haven't experienced it, but I have seen the trailer thing that's been brought up, where people have parked a trailer or a boat at the end of a private street. I think that's the one thing that I've noticed more than anything in our community. Parking, I mean, I, you know, one of the main reasons that the duplex thing was brought up is, A, we were approached by several builders that have the, typically the 20-foot private street with four lots on it, and they say, hey, middle housing code says I could treat a duplex like a single-family home from a density perspective. So that was kind of the first conflict point here. And so that's why this really kind of, we pursued this further for discussion is, you know, if, if the middle housing code's saying, hey, everywhere you have a single-family lot, you can put a duplex on it and treat it the same way, that's primarily where this discussion came from. I think in those situations, a lot of those are existing properties, so you have existing lots on existing private streets right now. Probably not a lot of them, but they're, they're out there, because builders have approached us about it. You know, it's kind of a conflicting code thing. You know, we've got this dwelling unit cap in our development code, yet middle housing's telling us something different. With the proper amount of parking, which is extremely important in Grants Pass, even though the state says we don't have to worry about it anymore, I think that could be overcome. You know, if we were to take a, a 20-foot, four-lot private street and say, we're gonna allow you to go up to eight, but you have to have proper parking, I think that would solve it. But then the question Brad has is, can we say, can we have, can we require proper parking now? I think that's, that's my biggest question. I think the other thing too now to bring up is, what we're seeing now with middle housing land divisions, is the use of what we call a private street is dwindling. Instead, what we're doing now is shared private driveways or shared private accesses. We've got, I mean, we, countless middle housing projects in the works right now, we're building countless, you know, several of them right now, where instead of doing the traditional private street, we're now doing, you know, 22-foot shared access driveways. And we can go 40, 50, 60, 80 units really that way and meet the code as it is, because technically, it's kind of a, it's kind of a hybrid between what you'd see for an apartment complex, you know, where you have 100 units or 50 units with shared driveways going to and from the street and, and shared parking. So essentially, that's what we're kind of morphing back into. So I think, I think this private street discussion is more relevant to today, what we've done in the past, and maybe what we'll allow on a smaller scale for these little four, four-lot projects. I mean, I think that's kind of where, I believe the focus should be. Brad mentioned staff kind of has concern about modifying the 22-foot with sidewalk standard to allow, say, double the density. I, I, I can agree with that. I mean, if we're gonna now allow 10 on a private street and that would push us to 20, I feel that that's probably too many. So I, I, I think what we, our proposal right now is to focus again on the 20-foot private street with the four lots or less off of them today, look to allow a duplex on those with proper parking and proper enforcement, allowing the fire marshal to tow the vehicle. To answer councillor Pell's question on the rules, yeah, so typically when we do private streets in a project, there is either CCNRs that address those directly, or sometimes we, if it's a simple project, we'll do a private street maintenance agreement. And that's also something that every property owner would have attached to their deed when they purchase the property, so. But of course, what you see a lot of times, you see renters come in, you know, and private property owners buy them in the first place, they keep them, they rent them out, the renters may not know. So if we have renters that are like, hey, I, I think I can do whatever I want, it's, it should be up to the property owner in the first hand to explain that to them. And secondly, again, if they're parking on the street, should, I, I'd like to see the fire department allowed to tow a vehicle after siding them, just like they would in the city on any other street. So yeah, I think that's, I think that's where I believe the home builders would be comfortable landing, if we can just get, allow that duplexes on those, on those smaller streets and, and the enforcement. So any questions beyond that?
Rob.
So you just used the term, you feel that duplexes potentially would be appropriate on a 20-foot wide street with proper parking. Define proper parking.
I think typically a duplex, when we build them, has at least a single-car garage and a, and a space in front of the garage. Almost exclusively in the past in Grants Pass, it's either, it's, it's at least that. So you essentially have two parking spaces per duplex unit.
Are there any other questions? I have Vanessa.
In terms of the ask of allowing the 20-foot private street and four lots or less, and what brought this discussion forward? If you had to put a number on how many units this, the dwelling cap has prohibited from coming forward or penciling out, do you also have a timeframe of, maybe that was five units in the last two years that it didn't allow, or 10 units, or what that looks like?
I know of three projects right now that builders have approached us on, so, and those, I think all three of those are four-unit, four lots of little developments. So, you know, essentially, you, if you take that and you, I, I have one right now that I think is still sitting empty, because I think they've been waiting to see where this discussion goes, and they really have a strong desire to build duplexes on there. We're really just seeing a very large shift in our community to middle housing uses. We've, we've actually done very, very few in the last two years, single-family projects from, from the start. We're building some, we're finishing some right now, and there's some other developers that are finishing some right now, but we're not seeing a whole lot of, of new single-family subdivisions going in, so this is kind of the, the way of the future, at least for the moment.
So maybe 24 units?
Yeah, I'd say 24 units, that I'm aware of.
Over, is that two years or one year, what does that look like?
It's probably over the past, probably the past year, year, year and a half. Probably the first one was about a year and a half ago.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Val?
Yeah, I just want clarity, because I, I happen to know where there is a 10-unit, one going in, and that, and it, and I just wanna make sure that the home builders are fine with what currently is, is the 22-foot with the sidewalk on one side? Correct? And so there's not a problem with that? Would that also need to have the same fire citation? I mean, I would assume.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so, but that, you don't really look, see a need for change for that one?
No, I mean, the one thing I do question is the distance, you know, you know, you talk about these numbers and they seem small, you know, you say, oh, it's only another two feet, or it's another four feet, but all that takes up land that's available for building on, and so if you knock a, a lot off of every subdivision because of these little, little adjustments, it's, it's, we're to the point now where everything's important. I mean, every unit or every duplex unit is important. Because we're getting so in-depth on this discussion, I guess, I've always questioned myself the 20 versus 22. Yes, the sidewalk, I could see that, right? You get more people, they wanna walk down the street, there's more cars coming and going. You know, is there really a true advantage to the extra two feet versus, you know, maybe keep the sidewalk, but the extra two feet, 20 versus 22, if there's no parking on the street anyways? Because, you know, a typical parking space is eight and a half to nine feet wide. The lanes, I think, out on, on Sixth and Seventh Street right now are roughly 10 feet wide. So, you know, if we're looking at changing things or accommodating more, I would, I would question that. But again, I, I think, I really do believe that with middle housing, as we move forward, if things continue the way they are, that we're gonna have a lot less private streets under the current classification.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Not right now, thank you Justin. All right. Council. Thoughts? Joel.
Well, I'm probably the one that sleaze knowledge will appear, so bear that in mind. But the water access and the public access for utility seems like a no-brainer, in that we need to do that. The towing for fire protection seems like a no-brainer. Then, and then we get to the, the required with to the streets and the parking, and I'm open on that one. The, the vagueness of the language that they've used in other cities of what's sufficient infrastructure they use as 20-foot wide roads, but I, I would guess that would be with no parking. And then that leads to that, that issue, which could only be resolved either by compliance or by towing. So I'm excited to hear what other people think.
Rick.
I would be in favor of the towing ordinance. Also, if it's a 20-foot wide road, to just have sidewalk on one side, and I also am an advocate for adequate parking. So if that's a single-car garage or the parking in front of the, of the duplex or home, I think I'm still supportive of that. Thank you.
Twain.
Yeah, I have to agree with both what Joel and Rick said, and definitely the fire, I'd be for towing. It's pretty, pretty common, it seems like, there's, you can't park it for a fire hydrant, that's pretty much that, anywhere I go, I know that, that I shouldn't be parking in fire, and, and, you know, Rob's question about homeowners telling them the rules, well, I don't know all the ordinances in the city either, so, but I know when I buy a house, from my experience, that you're given a couple chances to look over the ordinances, the easements, and you're gonna get those usually before you even close, and then you're gonna sign off all of them, so, you know, homeowners can pay, say they didn't know, but they obviously did when they bought the place, so, it's their responsibility to know the rules, and if they have any problem, and then, you know, like, man, I'm losing it here. There is a lot of agreements that can be made by developers, you know, we have things for like well agreements, people share wells and all kinds of things. It's just a requirement that, you know, they're put together properly, and if they have a good realtor and someone explained all those things, they should know the rules of what, you know, a shared driveway means. So if I was building it, I'd have those things in writing, so people, you know, because people like to say they don't know anything, but they do, so, I, I think this is a good plan and let's move forward.
Rob, then Vanessa.
Yeah, I would agree with everything that people just said. With regards to homeowners having a chance to see the rules, I was making sure, and quite frankly, the answer that Brad gave wasn't very definitive. The answer you're now saying, what Justin said, was more definitive, and I'll just remind people, for those who are paying attention in the early 2000s, we had dozens, if not hundreds of homes going in the Redwood District with DDNAs for future sidewalks and things like that, that were never recorded on anybody's deed. And when it came back, and Rick may know that, he was a planner, and maybe there's some others in the room that know it, but there was lots and lots of people that were very, very rudely awakened when they found out what the rules actually were, even though they were never told and it was never recorded on their deed. So I was just making sure, and I'm still not sure, that it is on everyone's deed, of what they can expect for repaving and so on and so forth down the line, and, and, you know, so I'm, I'm still not 100% sure, but I'm trying to make sure so that nobody ends up being surprised, because we saw it in early 2000s with brand-new construction, a lot of DNDAs that never got recorded anywhere, you know?
Vanessa.
I'm gonna actually be leveling with staff on their recommendations. I know that they brought forward a code amendment for the public easement on the private street to appease council direction, but I do see quite a bit of contention being possible with that. I actually am someone who lives on a private street, and so I do live on a, a four-unit private street, and it does get very congested pretty easily. You can imagine on any given day, one neighbor might have landscaping work getting done, so one side of the street is blocked by a truck and a trailer. Another neighbor may get grocery delivery, and while that is being unloaded, the UPS truck pulls in the driveway with absolutely nowhere to go. And this isn't even counting at the end of the street, the birthday party that's happening with three guests. So I do see concerns about allowing see concerns about allowing doubling of that. With, um, with it being on a private street, I see that being problematic. And I also am in support of the amendment to the code to, for the fire department to be able to tow vehicles. So, I, I don't support moving forward with amending the higher private street section, the public easement, and also support of moving forward the towing vehicles.
I just wanted to be clear on the towing part because it seems like that's, uh, fairly straightforward. But, um, what everybody's saying they're supportive of is during an emergency only, or at, at any time? Anytime?
Anytime.
Aaron?
I'd like to add, just a conversation piece. Uh, if we are going to move forward with council's recommendation for us to go ahead and to allow enforcement of, of that, I'd like us to also come back with the opportunity, if we can look into it, if it's legal, for us to, um, also have a fine for the homeowners' association if we have to do that, to cover our costs associated with that. My concern is, is it, from an aspect of, is it a good thing to maintain fire access and to enforce that? Yes. But we're, what we're technically doing is we're starting to get into a gray area where we're enforcing private CCNRs. And we want to try and stay away from that. And so, if the homeowners' association doesn't, is not strong and not doing their job of making sure their community is abiding by their own laws, they could just say, uh, we'll just call the fire department, they'll take care of that person. And so, now, we're the enforcement mechanism for the CCNRs. So, in order to help incentivize the HOAs doing their job to make sure their residents are abiding by their laws, there should be some kind of consequence to a homeowner not following the laws and us having to step in on a private street.
Um, I understand where you're coming from on that, Aaron. Um, I think it's a terrible idea, though, quite frankly. Uh, because now you end up with either the president of the homeowners' association or whoever being the bad guy, having to essentially carry weapons to enforce certain laws. And that's really the city's job, to enforce laws. And, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to tow off a public street, we're going to incur the costs. And theoretically, that's going to be recouped through, uh, real estate taxes. While the private, uh, street is also paying real estate taxes, the private development's paying real estate taxes the same way. And yet, you know, our city officials already carry weapons and can enforce things. Where you're asking a private group to then take on that role, I think it's just a really bad idea.
Well, the diff- the difference between public and private on this is you're talking maybe a private street that's twenty feet wide that doesn't allow on-street parking. Uh, so, it's been designed in a different way than a public street that provides for these type of activities. And so, my concern, again, is whether it's a good or bad idea, is that my concern is we're going to start to become the enforcement mechanism for CCNRs when there's a homeowners' association that has mechanisms in place to enforce the appropriate use of their laws. And so, we would be, i- in essence, potentially, the first, when we should be the last in coming in to try to make that happen.
DJ's on the phone. Might need to star six, DJ. Is he muted? Can you tell Karen?
Who's, uh?
DJ, we can't hear you. All right, go ahead, Dwayne, and we'll come back and see if we can get DJ.
My question is the CCNRs. I mean, some of those CCRs are so old and who enforces them? I don't see how we can enforce CCR. A homeowners' association's different than CCNRs. I hear, I hear God coming through.
[laughing]
So, I was, my concern is CCRs are very flimsy, from my experience in real estate. They're just not, like, there's nothing holding them, to hold anybody accountable versus a homeowners' association has a, a president of a board, and they're voted on by their people, blah, blah, you know what I'm saying? They pay a fee usually. So, I don't know how we're going to hold CCNRs accountable for somebody there versus an individual that's parking in front of a fire hydrant. So, just my question to this thing.
Thanks. So, got three issues on the table. The easy one is easement. That's a no-brainer. Allow for public infrastructure of those easements, and get the meters off the road. That's what we're asking for. I think that that's an easy one. The second issue is enforcement. I'm trying to look at this as an exclusive conversation from the density discussion that we're having on private roads. Whereas, if we have an issue with compliance of parking on fire lanes, then by all means, let's address it. Do we truly have an issue with parking enforcement on fire lanes? And the big question, as Arrow mentioned, is the city going to be the organization responsible for enforcement on private land? That's an excellent question. So, is there an issue that needs to be solved, regardless of the density conversation is where I'm coming out after this? I suppose I would be in favor, after due process of tickets and notifying the public street of the fire lane, the presence of the fire lane, and that parking is not permissible on those fire lanes, then I think towing as the last option would be justified. Now, in these fire lane situations, towing's at the owner's expense, right? And so, we're really talking about a responsibility issue here. Do we want to burden the city with the responsibility of policing private fire lanes? Not entirely sure. If that was demonstrated to me, that that was a clear issue, that council needed to instill policy to help solve, then let's do that. Third issue is the density. I believe that we should be, allow for increased density on, on, on private roads. There's two reasons for that. So, one being, middle housing allows it. You can take lot for lot, even Steven, and put a private road on one, and follow these twenty-foot standards, and you get four lots, or six. And right next door, on the same exact property, you can do a twenty-foot wide, same infrastructure, and you can get ten lots. So, it really seems to me that that follows into the risk associated. We were told in March when we had this meeting that there was a risk associated with higher density. I'm not prone to believe that. I don't think that there is a high risk. If there is a, an increased risk for higher density on private roads, it's marginal at best. Okay? So, I'm in favor of increasing density on private roads. Thanks.
I think, did you have a hand up, Rob? Anybody else?
I, I guess I'm unclear on exactly what DJ's saying. So, he's saying even for ten lots, he, a twenty-foot road would be applicable? O- okay, is that what I heard?
Were you asking me a question, Valerie?
Yeah, I was just asking you. So, you're saying even on a ten lot, you're happy with a twenty-foot road?
Yeah, yeah. And the big, the biggest reason that is, is because we have a new middle housing code that will permit just exactly that. So, as Justin alluded to, our private road standards are antiquated. Whereas, in the past, we have been, as Rob said, liberal in our applications of private land. Now, everybody in Oregon is on the same standards. And that middle housing standard allows for far increased density than what our private roads do. So, this is really a conversation about infill, utilizing currently-built infrastructure, understanding that, uh, middle housing is going to be how, um, people utilize land for density in, in the future.
Joel, and then Rob?
Well, and, um, I'm, I'm just trying to cut to the chase on the next steps here and try to be clear. And, um, it doesn't accommodate all of what every counselor has said, uh, because there's some things that are in direct conflict with each other, which is okay. So, I, I'm in favor of the, um, uh, minimum density standard for private streets serving two to four units. Uh, twenty-foot side, twenty-foot, uh, wide streets with sidewalk on one side, no on-street parking, allow a maximum of two dwelling units per lot, eight units on the street, but require the front or side, building side back, setbacks are adequate to ensure sufficient area for two off-street parking spaces per unit, but don't require that they be built. Don't mandate the parking because of the state code.
I think I, I just wanted to clarify with the twenty-foot, um, that doesn't have any sidewalk, does it? The twenty-two foot has sidewalk on one side.
Okay. Well, then I would change my opinion and, and go with that.
To the twenty-two foot?
Um, no, I would, I would, uh, I would stick with the twenty-foot.
Twenty-foot, no sidewalk, up to ten units, or?
I like the sidewalk, but that's just my personal preference.
Well, the twenty-foot width, the twenty-foot width that's required for the four units, um, doesn't have any sidewalk.
I, I under, I would, I understand that. I, I was adding the sidewalk as an additional thing. And, uh, that's not, that wa, again, that was my personal preference.
Okay. So, that bumps it up to the twenty-two, which is what we have right now.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. I, I guess I'm lost in what are you suggesting?
So, I'm suggesting that we have a twenty-foot minimum with no parking, with enforcement. And that there'd be a sidewalk on one side, but that would, that would be because of my preference. And I'm not, it's not hard and fast, according to me. You know? And I would, I would encourage the council to take a look at that and, uh, modify it if they think it does, if it needs to be changed.
Well, I, I guess I think, if I'm remembering correctly from our previous conversation, one of the issues we're trying to solve here is, um, if we're increasing, if we're allowing like one unit on a four, you know, uh, one of these smaller, uh, private roads to increase and do a duplex, then it would bump them into that five-unit category. And then they would have to install, you know, the sidewalk and, and make the, make the street wider to accommodate that sidewalk. And if the homes, the four units, or the first three really, are already built, um, there's not necessarily even adequate space, or there's a huge expense involved in, in widening the road. So, I, I think we could leave it as it is, is one option. Or you need to, um, make it so that at the get-go, all of these require sidewalks. Or you need to make it that you can allow more units without the sidewalk. I, I think are the three options. Rick?
I like four units without sidewalks, five to ten units, sidewalk one side. And I don't know if we can change the minimum paving width for the five to ten units to twenty-foot. Because it seems like the extra two foot, I'd actually, could see that putting into the multimodal path. But that would be my preference. Thank you.
So, just so that I understand, is that what, is that what we currently have, is the way you prefer it?
When I'm reading this, the current minimum paving width is twenty-two feet for five to ten?
Yes, because that includes the sidewalk on one side.
Well, sidewalk on one side. And, yes, the twenty-foot with no sidewalk, that is the current standard, yes.
Okay. So, you recommend leaving it as is?
For the twenty-foot, four, two to four units.
Yes. And not doing anything to accommodate this issue with like unit number five or six if, if there's an undeveloped lot where someone wants to add a duplex?
Well, the main issue I see on the five to ten units is parking. Um, but what you're also saying, am I asking for a sidewalk when they go to the five to ten units?
That's what the twenty-two feet is for. That's the only difference. Both of them have a twenty-feet, twenty-foot road. And then above five, five units and above goes into the two feet extra is for a sidewalk on one side.
Hmm. I'd like clarification on that.
Yeah, no, the, the, the extra two feet is, is blacktop. It's paving. Um, and then plus four feet of a sidewalk.
Oh.
So, what I heard Council Riker say was that he was supporting the, the, for the five to ten unit, still keep it at twenty feet of asphalt, but have the sidewalk still. So, and versus twenty-two feet of asphalt.
Okay. And maybe that's also what Joel's saying. Okay, sorry.
The thing, Sarah, I think what you were saying, though, if there's two to four units there right now, and you add the extra unit, then do we have to come up with creating the sidewalk? Is that correct?
That is one of the issues, is my understanding.
I'm...
Or, or it limits, you know, I mean, I think people are coming upon this first-come, first-served. If, you know, if one of the units gets it, gets it in, unit number three puts in a duplex, then there cannot be a unit number four, or...
So, on, on the five-to-unit, five-to-ten-unit upgrade, I'm out, I'm open for discussion on the sidewalk, but I think the parking issues is more concerned to me. Thank you.
Okay. Just, uh, I think we're all on the same page, then, on the towing issue, right? Do we have that one dealt with, that people generally are wanting, um, the city to be able to do towing? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a towing issue? Okay. And then on the issue of the, um, water access and the easement, I, I think I've heard everybody saying the same thing, that you do want the easement and that the meters would be located closer to the homes and not out of the street. Okay. So, we're just talking at this point about the, the street width issues. And have Dwayne, and then DJ.
I'm totally against the sidewalk, and I'll just tell you why. Because I live in a really nice neighborhood, and I can't keep the people out of the street. They hate to walk on the stupid sidewalks. It annoys the crap out of me. I'm just going to be honest with you. All day long, they walk on, in the road with dogs and everything else. The sidewalks feel useful, useless to me. And, and we're talking about a subdivision. We're talking, and we're debating over like four houses or something, or a duplex back there on a very small street. So, I don't think the sidewalk is that important, more or less as can cars get back and forth. And it's going to be a small amount. So, I don't think the sidewalk is, is, we shouldn't be worried about a sidewalk and, um, leave it that. This is a private street, not a public street. So, that, just where I'm at, I'm on a twenty-foot, no sidewalk.
DJ.
Yeah, Sarah, thanks for bringing that up, because, about the widening of the street. So, what, one, one thing to remember here is what we're talking about. It's, okay, if we want to increase density past the caps for twenty feet or twenty-two feet with the walkway, right? Let's say that you do increase that density. We're trying to have a conversation of, will we then, as the city, require a widening of the street and the addition of a sidewalk, right? So, that's really kind of at the core of the conversation here. Um, that being said, I'm, I'm twenty-foot, increase the density because somebody could build that right now using middle housing. And it's been determined by the state, and it's not, it's not a safety risk, otherwise they wouldn't allow to do it. And then I wanted to address the parking issues really quick. I think that we are having a conversation in that we would like to require parking, but the fact of the matter is, is you cannot require parking. And I think a parking requirement would arguably get us into a sticky issue. Now, no, but it could potentially get us into a sticky issue. Let me reject that. It could potentially. However, nobody's designing anything without parking. You know, we're, 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 we're operating on the presumption that the only reason developers and builders put parking in is because they're required to. In my experience, that's just bonkers. I'm not designing anything, nor is anybody else I know designing anything without parking for their clients to park on their property, in their garage, in front of their house. But that's just a fact. You know, you have to think about marketing. You know, people want to park their cars on their land. And builders build for that. I don't see that changing anytime soon. And I really don't see builders not putting parking accommodations on the lot because they're not forced to put parking accommodations on the lot. So, keep that in mind. We've eliminated parking requirements. People are still going to design parking spots. Just period. Thank you.
So, I, I appreciate the, uh, where the rubber meets the road, so to speak, uh, view of the parking, DJ. Um, it does conflict a little bit with, I believe, what, uh, Justin Gerlick said earlier, when he talked about the term proper parking. And he said, yes, there would be a driveway in front of a, a, a garage, which sounds reasonable to me. And whether or not that can be mandated right now, uh, you know, due to state regulations, I'm not sure where that falls. I don't know if anyone is sure. Um, but I guess... I don't know if anyone is sure. But I guess, you know, when we talk about the one to four or the five to 10, I guess what we heard here today too is really what we're talking about is that's potentially two to eight or 10 to 20. Because I guess from what Justin was saying earlier, we're looking at at least one plus one on each, on each, on each lot, is that not correct? So we're looking at a maximum of quite a bit more. Anyway, for that reason, because I have a completely different view than Dwayne on the sidewalks. You know, I used to live on Hawthorne near Lonridge Park. And I have to say, for the first year or so after the city put sidewalks in up and down Hawthorne, they were used very little. And I have to say after that, they used, they were used extensively. People walking with strollers, little kids learning how to ride a bike, et cetera, et cetera. And that was on a pretty wide road too, and that's on a really wide road with plenty of room in the street for people to ride bikes and walk with strollers. But when the sidewalks went in, that's exactly what happened and they're, they're used heavily. So for me, especially when you're talking about four to eight units or, you know, 10 to 20 units potentially, I think pedestrian safety and, you know, I mean, if we look at, you know, the street that, you know, DJ built recently, I mean, it's, it's a lot of young families. There's a lot of little kids, you know, on that street, some of them are learning to ride bikes, I see them, and some will be learning to ride bikes soon. So to me sidewalks are, make a lot of sense, you know, from a livability and a, and a safety perspective. Whether or not that's a 20 or 22-foot street, I, I don't really see the difference. I don't see the advantage of going to 22. But, but I, I think that for sure, the five to 10 should have, should have sidewalks mandated. And the one plus one parking, it really shouldn't be an issue for a builder if that's what you're gonna do anyway, because that's what the market demands. Then it's just a question of whether or not that's legal, you know, whether or not the city can, can pull that off. If the city can, then the builders shouldn't have any, any reservations because you said you're gonna build that anyway. So I just assume, you know, have some, some that one plus one mandated if that can be done and it's not gonna cost builders anything.
All right, well, I have, still not totally sure that I'm doing this correctly here, but I have the DJ and Dwayne would be in favor of 20 feet and no sidewalks. Is that at all, like, all private streets? Dwayne's nodding yes. Okay. And then I wrote down Joel, Rick and Rob now at doing a 20-foot plus a sidewalk for the five and up units. Rick's not too sure. Yeah, Rick?
I could support Dwayne's direction of no sidewalk. Thank you.
Okay, Rick is a no sidewalk now. And so I guess I have Joel and Rob doing 20-foot plus a sidewalk. And anybody else wanna jump in? Joel?
If I was the developer, I'd put in a sidewalk and I know it'd cost money. I'm, the, the, I think the mitigating answer to this though is it's mainly a dead-end street, correct?
Yes.
It's a cul-de-sac and you got kids riding their bicycle out in the street and, and the traffic is very minimal. And we talked earlier about safety and mainly being a function of speed and the speed of, of the cul-de-sac being really low. I live on a dead-end street and it, you don't have people going 40 miles an hour past the house. My kids play, what do you call that, boom ball out in the street. And then when the car comes by, they, they come in, whatever it was. So I'm okay either way, but if it was me doing it, if I was Justin, I would build a sidewalk.
So you're not, you're not sure that we need to require the sidewalk? Okay, well now we have four counselors saying they're not requiring the sidewalk. Anybody else wanna jump in there? Val?
Yeah, I, I kind of heard Justin originally saying that he would put in a sidewalk if it was five. And I think, I think it comes down to that you might, it's a matter of adding on or not. And that's what I'm getting, I'm, I'm kind of hearing is that if you're gonna put in, and I was first looking at it, that if you're just gonna put in one for up to four, which would be eight, that's fine, 20 feet, I have no problem with it. But once it gets to more units and longer, I struggle a little bit more for the reason that you talked about, kids out in the street. But if you have four units and there's eight on there and then they wanna add on to that, it's impossible for them to length, to make the street wider, just, it isn't. So this is a tough one, this is a tough one. But I, I think I might just go ahead and say that the 20-foot is fine with, for the 10 units. With the, up to 10 units, 20-foot sidewalk, 20 feet without sidewalks.
So just moving that cap from four to 10?
Mm-hmm. I'm assuming that's basically what you were saying, Dwayne and, saying Dwayne and DJ? Yeah, private street, yeah. Yeah.
Rick?
Valerie, I just wanna bring something to your attention. Every night, as you know, my wife and I go walking. We walk on Piedmont, which does not have sidewalks in the road. And a lot of times when we go down Oregon, we walk in the road rather than the sidewalk. And I know you do the same route, so there's bothly, essentially because those are both dead-end roads, we really don't miss the sidewalk because there isn't that much traffic. Thank you.
All right, well, it sounds like at this point, there's a majority that would be interested in doing 20-foot width with no sidewalk requirement up to 10 units. Did I understand correctly? All right. Is there any concern or anything else you need from us, Brad?
Sorry, I know you're, you're law discussion. Yes, one clarification, so up to 10. So if you're talking about the current street, which is going, you know, two to four, we suggested a doubling so that everyone on that street could do an extra unit, so that would be eight. If you said 10, then somebody on that street would be able to do one or two more units, but not everybody. Does that make sense? So I, I guess I would just ask for clarification if we're saying still keep it at eight for those, for the, for the one type A?
Okay, well, I guess now there's some maybe debate about whether there needs to be two section, two different requirements? Is that what you're thinking, Valerie? Like?
Basically, let me, what you're saying then is that we should make it 20?
Eight, it was his suggestion.
Right, staff's presentation was eight on the one and keep it at 10 for the other. But yeah, it, I think it should either be eight or 20 or...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, eight or 20.
Eight and 20, I'm sorry.
Eight and 20, that's what he's saying. He's just saying, because everybody could build one and if we only went 10, then only one other person could do more. But it should be up to 20 for everybody, so that everybody could build on. Do you see that? Yeah.
I mean, that would just not have two different groupings like we do now.
That, but that's in essence correct. And then you're also looking at the impact, and are you still okay with the 20-foot, 20-foot with potentially 20 units versus 10?
Yeah, I think that's what I underst, that, that's what I meant, was 20, so that everybody could have. It's not gonna assume that they will, but they could.
DJ had his hand up.
Yeah, thanks for needing this clarification because we certainly do need to decide about this. My position's the same thing. You could do this with middle housing, you can do this with the middle housing new application. And it is going to be at very least the minimum width standard for the city. Say this again, you could do a 20-unit or 20-dwelling unit. And at the very least, that new development will meet the minimum private standards that Grants Pass currently has. And I think Rob articulated this the best in March when we had this and when we were talking about the density discussion. He said, well, wait a second, first come, first served, you know, property A and B do it. Now, C and D can't do it because they've met an arbitrary density limit. And I just don't think that's fair. So how do we come up with a number? I'm coming up with a number because middle housing currently allows it for new development in this state right now and so should we. So yeah, I'm, I'm advocating for doubling eight or 20, yep. Thank you.
Rick?
I have a technical question. On the towing fee, is there ability for the city to collect an additional amount because the towing is on a private street or that wouldn't stand up as a separate item where we could create revenue to help compensate for additional activity? Or would that be discriminatory?
I, we'd have to obviously develop that portion of the code and see what it says. My preference would be we would model it the same as the rest of the city's towing codes, just for simplicity. But if we were to add something in there, I guess it would just be up to, once we bring that forward to you.
Okay, I think where we're at for our current proposal is that we would do a 20-foot width with no sidewalk requirement for up to 20 units on private streets. Is that? Okay. That sounds like that was where we were at. Okay. All right, I think we're done with that topic unless anybody has something else to add. Did we, did I catch you, DJ?
Could you please repeat that, Mayor?
I just, I don't know if I, if you spoke after I told you you could. Did you still have something you wanted to add?
No, thank you. That was, that was the time I was talking about things.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up then on the agenda is the first quarter work plan update. So City Manager Cubic is going to present that.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. It's my pleasure to be the one to speak to you and give you an update on our quarterly report update. This is really an update that catches the spirit in all the work of you as council, as policymakers and of our amazing staff and then also our community who all takes part in making some of these things happen. So as you know and you're aware, we have a strategic planning process that really drives where we go and what, what we do and what we try to achieve. And this is a report on our strategic plan accomplishments. It's relatively easy for us to track because all the goals and objectives and tasks are set up in a smart system to where we know what specifically we're working towards, who's gonna be assigned those, are they relevant? When are we gonna get those accomplished? And so it makes it easy to track. We have five main goals in our strategic plan, which are there in front of you. We have 15 objectives, which also bolster those goals and 22 specific actions, which help bolster the objectives. Looking at enhanced community safety. Objective one, maintain necessary public safety infrastructure. Action one, stabilize funding for police and fire services. This is something that we've had a number of workshops on and council has made some decisions. But in the first quarter, what we did do is we had discussions on public safety funding, where we might get those fundings. We had an outside consultant come in and talk to us about food and beverage tax. We had some learning and listening sessions throughout the first quarter and we discussed multiple funding options. And at the end of the first quarter, we were specifically targeting at the time, a potential utility fee and a discussion of the food and beverage tax. Now, we have since moved, moved forward with the, looking at and implementing a utility fee at $12 a month. And we've put a hold on food and beverage tax for further discussion. Under enhanced community safety, objective three, posture Grants Pass to be a leader in addressing homelessness, mental health, drug addiction and other related issues. There, there are two actions here. One is to explore opportunities to bolster mental health and drug addiction services. Two is to work with state and local partners to establish homeless shelter sites. In the first quarter, what we've done is we've continued our partnership with PATH. That's Partners Assisting the Homeless, providing an opportunity for them to meet, providing staff resources and staff time to meet with them, have those discussions. The further the points that we're talking about here in action one and action two. And we're continuing to make positive momentum in addressing that. As we know, we have a few sites that are up in the, that'll be reported in the second quarter, but we have made positive movement. And that's really kudos to PATH for helping coordinate all of this effort. Under provide cooperative shared leadership, develop and implement community communication strategy. We have a few points here. One thing I think is nice to note is we did gain 478 Facebook followers. We have definitely increased our numbers by over 13 followers from last year, which is great and we continue to do that. That's, Mike's been doing a great job trying to bolster those numbers. We began also coordinating coverage of stories with police and fire. It's really easy to report numbers and data and all that kind of stuff, but really what does that mean? In African bull elephant ways, you know, you, you, what, you, you, you put, give it, give it something that people go, oh, that's the size of an elephant. So same thing here, we're trying to provide stories that provide value to the community. And it's just a different approach to getting the information out while you still get the data, you also have an associated value with the service delivery. We've continued to practice and, and schedule a number of different social media posts over, over the quarter. We've done multiple postings to help ensure an opportunity for the public to know what's going on. And we'll continue to employ, employ those practices on all of our activities. In coordination with our HR department, we began weekly updates of job openings. We actually created more of a video slideshow on Facebook so people can find an opportunity to follow it in that fashion. And we also did a custom QR codes, et cetera, to get that out there. And we believe that that's helping with regards to our job postings. Continuing on the information campaign, we've done a number of housing and neighborhood activities. Our Housing and Neighborhood Specialist Amber Nique has been great in working with Michael and, and our, our information officer to get things out. We began utilizing our new housing and incentive and initiative marketing plan and posting that. One of the things we did post was the idea of what an accessory dwelling unit is. And that happened to be one of the, the best viewed little activities that we did. So people were very interested in, in those dwelling units. So that was just another opportunity for us to promote what we're doing out there to increase housing. Housing and Neighborhood Specialist also published our first semi-annual housing developer newsletter and will continue to do that. It seems to be well-received. Designate a portion of the transient lodging tax to fund tourism-related projects. This is something you're familiar with. We have created a grant program based on council direction, along with staff's recommendations. And we did do a fall cycle where we had a total of $21,000 in grant funding to support tourism promotion. This provides an opportunity for the city to provide small dollar amounts to some of the nonprofits and active groups to help promote some of their activities, which brings tourism in, whether it be things like Porch Fest or, or Back to the 50s. We are having an active partnership in their success. We've also done a number of things to help bolster the cycle itself, to make it easier for those individuals who are applying for grants. We have been working with IT to develop tracking methods for the grants, which helped. And economic staff is also updating the grant process in, in the cycles. So we've found that this is very successful, we've got a great program and we're looking forward to the continuation of that program and so are the, the grant recipients. We create, one of the actions under economic opportunities is to enhance the central business district. Action one, create a permanent plaza downtown. As you're aware, we've had a number of workshops on this. We have a design consultant, Thornton Engineering, who's completed 60% set of civil drawings for the Owl Plaza. And we're working on still doing that. But the first quarter, we did a lot of work with the engineer and we had one or two workshops also with council. Under facilitate sustainable manageable growth, develop practical solutions to community development challenges. Increase available buildable lands inventory. So in January, DLCD, Department of Lands and Conservation, approved a technical assistance scope of work and contract for the city's urban growth boundary land exchange project. This is where we're looking at, say, for instance, our urban reserve land... This is where we're looking at, say, for instance, our urban reserve lands, which are lands to be projected to be used in, in the next twenty to forty years, so the, the now to twenty years, and see if there's opportunities for us to maybe flip-flop our urban growth boundary land to our reserve land to potentially spur and spark additional development. In the first quarter, staff also met with DLCD staff, and we were looking at the review of our 2021 buildable lands inventory and all of our comp plans, et cetera. We're going to have a stakeholder meeting that deals with all of this, which is planned for early fall of 2024. So there's a good one that you're aware of. It took a long time to do, much longer than we thought, but one of the things in developing proactive solutions to community development challenges is the city of Grants Pass did something remarkably new in the state of Oregon, and that was, let's try to do a transportation impact analysis for a whole area so we can get it rezoned quicker and sooner and help the developers. Well, it took a little more than six months. It took almost two years to get this done because we had to work through a process the state was not used to approving. We are in that place where we're moving forward with that, where we've notified a number of owners with regards to their potential zone change opportunities, and they have an opportunity to respond at the end of, until June first, to let us know if they want to annex and receive city zoning. Under sustainable manageable growth, develop proactive solutions to community development challenges. Action three is develop programs which incentivize increased density development. Our Housing and Neighborhood Specialist Amber is working with Economic Development Department to rework a portion of our urban renewal agencies project list to provide for an opportunity to include high-density incentives also. So that's relatively new. That was a modification to our urban renewal agency about a year and a half ago. So we're still defining what role that might play in housing and increasing housing development. And as we move forward, we'll bring those to you. Objective one, develop proactive solutions to community development challenges. Under facilitate sustainable manageable growth, action four, scheduled bi-monthly workshops for the Home Builders Association. Today's workshop was one of those, and we're staying as much as possible on, on track and timing with that. I think overall, it's been a great program that was established and recommended through the strategic planning process. We have had a very strategic focus on development, how to incentivize development, how to speed up development, how to make things easier, and that was due to a discussion that we had during strategic planning and a, an objective that got put in the strategic plan. Objective two is to encourage environment which provides for the growth of affordable housing opportunities. There's a number of actions here under this. One is to support and encourage the development of two hundred and twenty-five units of housing per year. So some of the things that we've done, and we've done a lot more, but this is just the first quarter, but we've done follow-up to a number of these actions too, in the, the second quarter, I'm sorry. In the second quarter, a recommendation is forthcoming to council to do an infrastructure RFP scoring committee for the allocation of funds for a twenty-two unit affordable housing project on Schofield Road. That might sound familiar to you because we have taken some additional action on that, but in this quarter, we were working up to making that happen. A request for interest, which is a little different than a request for proposal, was also done for a nine-acre piece of property, and staff is in active discussions with Pano Inc. We've had subsequent council workshop discussions on that and where we're going, and we are making positive progress in the potential development of a city-owned property, nine acres, for additional housing for the city. And we're talking a number of housing units, fifty-five to eighty-six or so different, different units, which will be a very positive for our infrastructure. Continuing along the same action, in March, staff prepared the city's first notice of funding availability for our housing opportunity grant funded by our construction excise tax. As you may know, we started creating an excise, construction excise tax about two years ago. We said as a policy that we were going to sort of wait until we got about half a million dollars in that fund to start providing grant opportunities. Well, we do now have about five hundred thousand dollars, and we are in the process of looking at what we can do to incentivize housing with our CET dollars. In the fourth quarter of 2023, council did authorize a twelve-month extension for the development of the city's Ramsey, Nebraska property. This is a piece of surplus property that, similar to the Allenwood property that we were talking about, the city was trying to find an opportunity to increase housing. We're working with Chrisman to have about a fifty-one unit project, which is going to focus on lower-income senior housing for that project. So we're continuing to work with them to make that happen. Under maintain, operate, and expand our infrastructure to meet community needs, action two, downtown lighting project. So we've talked about a number of different downtown lighting projects. This, this one specific, we've got some where we're putting in period acorn lighting, and then also we've discussed putting in some more aesthetic lighting on Fifth Street, sort of by the Owl Lot. That sort of goes in between Fifth Street from one side to the other, but we recognize that there may be some fire code issues, or the fire department may have some issues in responding and utilizing some of our equipment unless it's engineered and designed appropriately. So we're still reviewing opportunities and alternatives to create some kind of aesthetic environment with lighting that will also comply with fire code and the needs of the fire department. Identify and apply for grant funding, which is objective three, ensure park infrastructure needs are met. We've received, we've received hundreds of thousands of dollars of funding over this, in this last year. Dollar Mountain is just one example, where we received, I think, about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to help with twelve miles of trail development, which is exciting. Reinhardt Volunteer Park, some of you might have been out there for the ribbon cutting. I know Council Lovelace was. She was almost run over by a mob of third graders when she cut the ribbon to that park. They were all sitting there, and, and we said a few words, and she said a few words, she took the scissors, and she cut the scissors, and I almost tried to jump out to say. The kids were very respectful, though. They just parted right around her, and she wasn't touched. So that was good. Very, but that was very popular. Under continued infrastructure repair and improvement, we have some Portland Loups that we've installed. We're, we've installed one in Baker Park. We have two downtown. And some of the things that we're working on is scoreboards being fixed at Reinhardt Volunteer Park, along with skate park contract has been awarded to do some refurbishing on our skate park to make that safer for our youth to recreate in, and actually adults also have seen out there at the skate parks. And these are just some other things that we're working on. We're doing a lot of infrastructure repair. Caveman Pool, we've been discussing. Court repairs at Reinhardt Volunteer Park. We're doing quite a bit to make sure that the facilities that we have are top-notch facilities that the community wants to utilize. Under enhance opportunities to promote character and community spirit, acquire Main Street certification. A number of you, I'd say the majority of you sitting here, were at the, the meeting that we had at Wild Rivers Annex, where we talked about this. This is a great opportunity for us to get together and try and determine a way that we can have and increase our downtown economic viability, and we're continuing to work through that process. We did get some volunteers from the local downtown area to continue that momentum, and they're still going hard at it. So it's real positive, and I look forward to that progress and what the ultimate end result might be. Under objective five, reduce carbon emissions and increase climate resiliency. Utilize energy-efficient conservation block grant and funds to complete a solar feasibility study for sites identified in the Sustainable and Energy Action Plan. And request for proposal was issued for that in that quarter. Under infrastructure identification, thirty trees have been identified for replanting the downtown corridor, updated the forest, the urban forester management plan, and Arbor Day tree planting was a success, and some of you were out there for that, where we planted a number of trees with the youth of some of our schools. Continuing, continuing with infrastructure implementation, fifty-seven total trees were planted from the Memorial Tree Program and the Tree Canopy Program within our parks, and we did do a contract for thirty trees in the downtown corridor. And with that, that concludes my quarterly report for our strategic plan and all the cool things that we've been able to do together as a community to accomplish those goals.
Thank you, Aaron. Council, do you have any questions? Joel?
I was just wondering, under housing units, some of the grants we gave for, like, out at Clover Lawn with the, the low-income vets housing, we don't, we don't account for that under that, that metric?
Some of those have gone, some of those have gone through. That one still is, Brad will talk on this one.
Yeah. So unfortunately, the, the project did not proceed because they did not get their funding on the veterans' project at Clover Lawn. So they shifted their focus from that property to their Hillcrest property. So that's, yeah, yeah.
So that's to be determined.
To be, to be determined on that one.
Okay. Thank you.
But it is exciting to think about all the housing projects that are going, going on right now. We've had, and when I say we, the city council has had a fingerprint on, on so much of it, whether it be a fingerprint to help reduce regulations, a fingerprint to provide additional funding for and to incentivize a number of these projects. So we've, I think, council, kudos to you for having, having taken action to help make some of those projects happen.
Well, and in addition to that, the, the county and several of the nonprofits on our joint committee have put in some housing, transitory housing that, that isn't reflected up there either, a, as well as the private sector and their building of housing.
Are there any other questions? Valerie?
Yeah, I guess I do have a question because I know that the, the SCNIC, the one upon SCNIC, which is the senior, the twenty-two unit, and I'm excited to see that, and at this point, we got a letter from the Mid Housing that was saying that, that, is that one in the urban renewal area, the one upon SCNIC, Mid Rogue? So they were, they were wondering if, since one of them got the funding and the Hillcrest has not gone forth with the ARPA funding, where there was a possibility that we could use ARPA funding for one and the, ARPA money for the other. So URA funding for one and ARPA. So that's been kind of thrown out there, and I don't know where we go with that, whether that's something that the council can consider doing or...
Is that, is that pertaining to a recent email that, that, okay? So I was asking the city recorder about that. My email did not have the attachment, so I don't know what their letter, I couldn't get it. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to get that. I'll be able to better answer that after I read what their request is. But for some reason, mine and hers doesn't have the attachment to it. So...
Thank you. Yeah, because I was just curious. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the work plan? No? All right. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is agenda review, and let's try to make this quick because we have an executive session still, but you all have a budget committee meeting tomorrow evening, and then we have a council meeting on Wednesday night with a public hearing to consider an ordinance regarding the Allen Creek Road Stormwater Pond Project, a zone map amendment, a public hearing on an ordinance for the home bridging Grants Pass Senior Cottage's comprehensive plan map, zone map amendment, and ordinance regarding a middle housing code amendment, an ordinance regarding a property line vacation for, at six seventy and six eighty Rogue River Highway, a second reading on the Mid Rogue Foundation annexation, a public hearing for an ordinance at Allen Creek Road Stormwater Pond Project annexation. And then our council action items are a resolution regarding the Ramsey, Nebraska Option Agreement Amendment, a resolution awarding fiscal year twenty-four overlays, a resolution renewing insurance with CIS, we're in our consent calendar now, a resolution approving the non-bargaining salary schedule, a resolution approving the Frogger Fair in Riverside Park, a motion to re-adopt the city's investment policy, a motion regarding the Allen Creek Road Stormwater Pond Project Zone Map Amendment findings of fact, a motion approving Yonser RV Park Gallagher Appeal findings of fact, and a motion approving the Committee on Public Art Appeal findings of fact, and appointing, potentially appointing the UAPC members, but we actually need to reschedule one of those interviews. Any questions or things you want moved off of consent calendar, anything like that for Wednesday night? Nothing for Wednesday night? Rick?
So I have a question because Wednesday night, we had the ability to point to UAPC members, but lacking the interview. Will we be postponing that to some other?
Yeah, I think we probably should just move the whole appointment unless, yeah, are they having any sort of quorum issues or any sort of pressing deadline issues? Or should we just have the UAPC?
No, we're not having a quorum issue with the planning commission right now, so we could probably delay, hold it for another meeting.
Okay. Yeah, let's do that, and we'll, so that we just have everything in one, one decision there. Okay. And then our next workshop, actually, for the month, that would be our last meeting for May because we do have Memorial Day coming up. So our next workshop right now is scheduled for June third, and that would have some discussion on minimum density, multifamily permits, and SDC incentives. All right. Anything else that you know of that we need to get going? Joel?
So I'm not sure this needs to be put on the agenda, but we at least at a minimum need some additional information, and that's the Spay and Neuter Annual Report on Cats in the Park. They reported three statistics. Zero cats had to be trapped, they only needed to be picked up and placed in a carrier. So I was wondering how many cats were picked up and put in the carrier down there at the park? And the other question I had for that was how many were, were being neutered? The worst case is we're just feeding cats and they're breeding down in the park. And the best is that we're managing it in a humane manner and taking care of the issue. And I, and I can't tell from the, from the data that's reported. So at a minimum, I would need to know how many cats were picked up and placed in a carrier and how many were neutered. And that could be a memo. Wouldn't have to be a presentation, and from that, depending on that information, maybe we need to review that at a workshop. I, I got to share just a, a interesting anecdote. You don't have to believe me. I, I came home from vacation the other day. In my backyard, there was a cougar. And, you know, they don't, they're a wild animal, and guess what they eat? Cats. Dogs. And, and that's not something that we want to encourage, though, I mean, it's not a danger to humans. As soon as it saw me, it effortlessly leaped over a seven-foot fence and went over to my neighbor's chicken coop. But there are other issues associated with, with the activity.
So your question is wanting to know how many had to be picked up and placed in a carrier, since that there's kind of a distinction between trapping and...
There, and then coming into...
Okay. Is that something we can follow up with? Joko's Spay and Neuter for that?
Yes. We can do that. I'll see if they have that information.
Anything further? All right. I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session. Vanessa?
I move that we enter executive session. Seconded by Rick. All in favor of adjourning the council workshop and convening in executive session? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing those subjects previously noticed for this executive session, which is meeting with city attorney regarding rights and duties and current or likely litigation. This is, executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.660, and more specifically, under the subsections of that statute, which have been publicly noticed for this meeting. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically requested not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, we will return to open session and welcome... we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. And we have Erin Heisel here with us today. Are we, okay, we're going to switch over the recordings.